Yeah, I know.
Seven thirty, I'm gonna call the special town meeting to order. Our first item of business is the election of a moderator. Their nominations, yes, sir?
I'd like to mark, uh, to nominate Mark Simmons as the moderator.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded.
I need names, guys, so when you.
Randy Clifton, John Burnham. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
I move that nomination be closed. Sarah Muska, twenty-five Maple Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second, the East Minar, seventy-three Miller Road.
A motion has been made and seconded to close nominations. All in favor of closing nominations, please say aye. All opposed, no. Nominations are closed. All in favor of Mark Simmons as moderator, please say aye. Opposed, no. Mark Sawyer.
Don't break anything. First quarter of business, I'm, hold on, my script isn't having.
Fine.
Notice of meeting.
Warning, notice of special town meeting, East Windsor, Connecticut, to be held on March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, and referendum vote by voting machine to be held on April fourth, two thousand twenty-three. All electors and persons qualified to vote in town meetings of the Town of East Windsor, Connecticut, the town, are hereby warned and notified that the Board of Selectmen of the town are convening a special town meeting to be held at the Town Hall, John Daley Junior Meeting Room, eleven Rice Street, Broadbrook, Connecticut, and via Zoom on Wednesday, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, at seven thirty P M for the following purpose. Item number one, to elect the moderator. Item number two, to consider and vote on the ordinance concerning local property tax relief for veterans. The full text of the ordinance recommended to the special town meeting is available for review at the town clerk's office. Item three, to consider and vote on the conveyance of property located at twenty-seven Phelps Road to the individual or individuals who own the home. Item four, to consider and discuss but not vote on a resolution appropriating four million, seven hundred and twenty thousand for costs associated with an addition and renovations to the Scout Hall Youth Center Community Center project and authorizing the use of federal and state grant monies to finance the portion of the appropriation not funded for monies in the town's capital and nonrecurring fund. The full text of the resolution approved by the Board of Selectmen and recommended to the special town meeting is available for review at the town clerk's office. All those persons qualified to vote in town meetings of the town are hereby further notified that pursuant to the Connecticut general statutes and the town charter, the Board of Selectmen have removed the above item number four on the call of this special town meeting for submission to the voters of the town who are qualified to vote at town meetings for yes or no vote by voting machine on the following question. Shall the Town of East Windsor authorize an appropriation of four million, seven hundred and twenty thousand for the cost of the Scout Hall Youth Center Community Center project to be paid for in part by a federal grant in the maximum amount of two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand and up to nine hundred and twenty-four thousand of the town's Federal American Rescue Plan Act grant monies, after deducting other grants or other sources of funds available to the town for the project? Yes or no? The referendum vote will be conducted at the town's two polling places during the hours between six o'clock A M and eight o'clock P M on April fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Absentee ballots will be made available in accordance with law dated at East Windsor, Connecticut, the sixteenth day of March, two thousand twenty-three. East Windsor Board of Selectmen, Jason E. Bowser, first selectman, Marie De Souza, deputy selectman, Sarah Muska, selectman, Alan Baker, selectman, Charlie Dornell, Charlie Nordell, selectman.
Thank you, Angie. And I'll read the, uh, the eligibility to vote under Connecticut general statute, chapter ninety, section seven dash six. At any town meeting other than a regular or special for one election, at any meeting of any fire, sewer, or school district, or it or any other municipal subdivision of any town incorporated by any special act, any person who is elector of such town may vote, and any citizen of the United States of the age of eighteen years or more who jointly or separately is liable to the town, district, or subdivision for taxes assessed against him on an assessment of not less than one thousand dollars on the last completed grand list of such town, district, or subdivision, or who would be so liable if not entitled to an exemption under Connecticut. General statute subdivision, parentheses seventeen, parentheses nineteen, parentheses twenty-two, parentheses twenty-three, parentheses twenty-five, or parentheses twenty-six of section twelve dash eighty-one may vote, unless restricted by the provisions of any special act relating to such town, district, or subdivision. Okay, um, just a few, uh, context notes, uh. Uh, I don't, if everybody's, anybody's got cell phones, if you could put them on silent, please, just check. It'd be very much appreciated. And, uh, can find your comments to the resolution that's presented, and don't stray off of that. And, uh, all requests for comments are to be directed through me. And I ask that comments remain civil and respectful. And if that's not the case, well, I can take appropriate action. Okay, we have the first resolution. Does someone have that?
Hey, Martin, one fifty-eight South Water Street. To consider and vote on the ordinance concerning local property tax relief for veterans. Full text of the ordinance recommended for the special town meeting is available for review at the town clerk's office. I move the foregoing resolution be adopted.
Second.
Second, Don Platt, P. Mark, Word Lane.
Donald Platt. Okay.
Any discussion on that? Say none. I guess we can do a, just the voice vote, if that suffice. Okay, all those in favor that foregoing resolution, please by signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion pa- of the resolution passed. We have a second resolution to be presented. Somebody have it. It's, it's three.
Oh, item number three? No, I thought you were gonna say item number two, sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, sorry. Item number three, Sarah Muska, twenty-five Maple Avenue. To consider and vote on the conveyance of property located at twenty-seven Phelps Road to the individual or individuals who own the home, I move the foregoing resolution be adopted.
Second.
Name, please.
John Burnham.
Thank you.
Okay, motion and seconded. All those in favor to be signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Check the, check the folks online, too. Well, ask, ask if they'd like to cast a vote.
Okay, anybody that's online, um, do you have somebody? Modern technology, I'm B C before computers. Okay, the people on, uh,
No.
On Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay, you wanna vote, unmute your microphone? Un- unmute your micro- microphones and let us know how you feel about it. What was it, two people? I guess there's no, you're good. It's only offline, okay, thank you. All right. All right. Motion, the resolution passes unanimously, it sounds like. I thought we were gonna, nobody here. All right, we have a third item on the agenda here, and it's, it's not something we're gonna vote on, but it has to do with the Scout Hall of funding and, uh, any, uh, how many of you wanna speak on that? No, raise your hands. Okay. When you wanna, just, uh, if you wanna speak, just stand up and say, I'll call on you, raise your hand, and give your name and address, and you can speak.
Alan Baker, according Rice Street. To consider, make motion to discuss, consider and discuss but not vote on a resolution appropriating four million, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars for costs associated with an addition in renovations to the Scout Hall Youth Center Community Center project. And authorizing the use of federal and state grant monies to finance the portion of the appropriation not funded for monies in the town's capital and nonrecurring fund. The full text of the resolution approved by the Board of Selectmen and recommended to the special town meeting is available for review at the town clerk's office. All those persons qualified to vote in town meetings of the town are hereby further notified that pursuant to the Connecticut general statutes and the town charter, the Board of Selectmen have removed the above item on the call of this special town meeting for submission to the voters of the town who are qualified to vote at town meetings for yes or no vote by voting machine on the following question. Shall the Town of East Windsor authorize an appro- appropriation of four million, seven hundred and twenty dollars for the cost of the Scout Hall Youth Center? Excuse me. Four million, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the cost of the Scout Hall Youth Center Community Center project to be paid for in part by a federal grant in the maximum amount of two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand and up to nine hundred and twenty-four thousand of the town's Federal American Rescue Plan Act grant monies, after deducting other grants or other sources of funds available to the town for the project? Yes or no? The referendum vote will be conducted at the town's two polling places during the hours between six o'clock A M and eight o'clock P M on April fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Absentee ballots will be made available in accordance with law. I move the foregoing, foregoing resolution be adopted.
Okay, since we're not gonna have a vote on this.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay. We're gonna have discussion on it only, no vote, so. Oh, your motion and seconded. Who wants to speak first? Something, yes.
All right, I'm from, two forty-seven South Water Street, um. I, I just wanted to talk tonight a little bit about the, the whole concept of a community center. I mean, there's a lot going on, and Facebook and newspapers, and it seems to be always kind of zeroing back to our, to a senior center, and I don't think that's the concept. Uh, it's a community center. It's meant to be a center for all of us as a whole community. Primarily, it will serve the seniors during the daytime when they are have their lunches and all of their programming, but in its whole, it should be a place that serves us as a whole community. I envision, hopefully, that we can get to a point where, because we have a space that is large enough to accommodate different age groups at the same time, that it truly becomes a multi-generational situation. When our seniors are there, that, um, some of the kids groups, some play groups from the Broadbrook School can go there and engage with the seniors that probably our school system can start to send kids there to engage. That the seniors will wanna come there at night to engage with things that they don't generally get to. Um, we as a community are generally fairly segregated from each other because all of our things happen either at the library or at the school or at the senior center or over there, and COVID didn't help where everybody got brought back into their little cocoons, um. And if we have a space like this that we utilize that we do more programming, it can bring us back to that community that I remember from when my children were little. And I think the Scout Hall option is the best option we have. We're getting the money from the federal government, which does not come easy. And it's placed before us, potentially. I think that as a community as a whole, we should grab onto it and bring it back to the community as one altogether. Thank you.
Don Platt, P. Mark, New York Lane, and thank you, Theodore, maybe to speak at this special meeting. Um, I've been using the senior center now for a few, few months as a privileged player. And, uh, it's just there was one time, and a couple, about a month ago, we almost lost an elderly man because it was so icy. If I had not been there to grab this gentleman, it would have been a nine-one-one call and not a happy ending. Because he almost took a header at the bottom of the stairs because of so icing. That's just one issue. The issue was space. I'm there playing cribbage. Jason comes in for his monthly, I'm not sure, or first election, caught with the first election. Gentleman down, gentleman on the town, uh, building, are trying to play we golf and we bowling. Can't do it. He can't hear. They can't play because he's trying to go over their voices. And, um, and then on top of that, you have multiple people that are using the annex, and they're probably using, trying to use the upstairs of the party one. Again, that's just, you know, it just, it doesn't work because they gotta run back and forth, you know, so if you had one location for everyone, it just makes more sense. And for those who haven't had a chance, and I, and I beg you to, to take a ride down to the Scout Hall, okay, and walk around and see what a gorgeous piece of property. It, it's just absolutely gorgeous. And it's ours. Granted, it's been leased to the Scouts. They've been there for, for eon, but it's still ours as residents. So please, again, I beg you all vote yes because we need it as a community, not just a senior center, but as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Paul. Okay. Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street. I am also the president of the Scout Hall Building Committee Incorporated, not an L L C, five oh one C three corporation. Some of that information has been misrepresented. I just wanna say that the entire Scout Hall Building Committee who has put in thirty years to make this possible, we built the building, gave it to the town. Okay, the town owns it, they own the property. Very important. We are a hundred percent in favor of this project. So there's been some talk that made it seem like there's other situations involved. None of it's true. Here we are saying, yes, go forward, and no, we're not giving up our lease. It's being modified. That has been through the Board of Selectmen in the past. It will go through the Board of Selectmen again. But the lease will be modified, and the town will take over the building, the parking areas, and all the green grass around, and we will continue to handle the wooded areas, the pond, the camping areas, the barn. So the scouts and youth groups will have places to meet in addition to this spectacular concept. Very important, we understand that the, there's very little negativity. It's only a few. Don't be misled, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
In the back there, please. Get down, one twenty-five Depot Street. I want, I'm gonna stand up here because I wanna address the room, please, um, thank you. I, I share Norine's aspiration and Don, right? I share his aspiration. I'm a hundred percent behind what they're looking for for this community. And in fact, I wanna play cribbage with Don because that's my favorite thing to do. Um, but this is a tale of two projects. There's one project, which is the Senior Center Community Center that we've been told is being funded by a federal grant that was a congressional grant for two point seven million dollars, which is supposed to pay for increased senior services and, um, and to address, um, the poor in the community, low-income residents. That's a specific purpose. And I asked for the grant application because I wanted to see whether the grant application included the relocation of town offices, other facilities from town, or if it was dedicated for seniors and for the, for, for people of low income in the community. So I filed a FOIA request, and I got back a response from the first selectman that says, there are no documents to be produced. So I can't get a copy of the grant application. And if I can't, I don't think any of you could either, and nobody has seen the grant application, and I wanted it to inform me and our community about what is the purpose of the two point seven million dollars in federal grants? Because I read what Blumenthal, Senator Blumenthal, Senator Murphy issued when they approved it, and it was a congressional issuance of the grant, and it says to streamline senior services and to provide, um, services for low-income residents. This is a rural, uh, agriculture department grant, and it's designed for rural communities that don't have the wealth like South Windsor or the communities to build large buildings, and it's to provide money for lo- for low-income or rural communities that lack wealth. And that's why we got the money. It's a, it's an agriculture USDA rural agricultural grant. And so the tale of the two stories is, one story is the Senior Center, the Aspirations, the multi-generational center, and the other side of the story, the other tale of the story is what has just come out, the, the other side of it, and, um, the first selectman De Souza published this in the J I. And she says, right, clearly, it would also move the park and recreation from the Town Hall Annex, thus bringing up space for the cram quarters of the Police Department, registrar voters, and ambulance association possibly. The Senior Center would move out of the upstairs of Broadbrook Fire Department, allowing the much-needed space for that operation. The second story here is not about the operations. The second story here is we're going to clear out Town Hall Annex for a Police Department expansion. All those offices are moving to Scout Hall. If you think that additional seventy-five hundred square feet of new space in Scout Hall, because there's seventy-five hundred now, if you think this five million dollars is going to expand space for seniors, you're wrong. Because that five million dollar expansion is going for the Town Hall Annex to move into Scout Hall. And what's gonna happen is they're gonna expand the Police Department. I have no stake in that. I have no say in that. I don't I don't know whether or not we need to expand our Police Department into the Town Hall Annex, and I, and I certainly think that the, that the Fire Department needs to move upstairs. That's granted, okay, in the Fire Department. There will be less space for seniors and social services in Scout Hall than there is in the current Senior Center building. I'm not comparing, saying the space is anything good over there, and I'm not suggesting you keep it over there, but that seventy-five hundred square foot addition is going to a Town Hall move. Town Hall Annex is moving over, and Rita Souza has told us, and other people have published recently, that this is the whole purpose of this project. It was conceived to move town offices out of the Annex. It was conceived to put those town offices into the Scout Hall, and the Senior Center, Senior Services is a byproduct. Why don't we take the entirety of the money and use it for seniors and social services? Why don't we build seventy-five hundred square feet in Scout Hall for seniors and social services? Why do we need to put park and rec into this building? We already have youth, because they're over there for, for the Scouts. We are ready to make a teen center that is non-existent in East Windsor, right? Close down in Broadbrook. We don't have a teen center. We don't have a fire prevention center for the, for the youth that are in police involvement. Why don't we just put all this money into seniors and social services? Leave park and rec and the Annex where it is. That's not the purpose of the grant in the first place. So when there are people that say no to this project, it's not no to the Aspirations. It's no to moving Town Hall Annex. We need to say no. We don't wanna put valuable town money into Town Hall Annex. This referendum is kind of a misrepresentation to the taxpayers, and I don't say that word lightly. Taxpayers, voters are going to the polls thinking they're voting for a Senior Center. They're not. They're voting for half Senior Center, half Town Hall Annex, move over to the, to the, um, to the Scout Hall. I, I think that the referendum needed to be clear what this is. I don't, I think it's misleading to the voters to tell them that that's what this project is. I feel bad for the seniors, but you're only gonna get half of what you think you're getting. That's all you're gonna get. And the Annex is gonna be over there, and the rec, parking rec is gonna be over there. By the way, parking rec, the kids do their programs in the schools. They're not gonna do them over there. They're doing them in the schools right now. That they have school programs, a parking rec sponsor that are in all the elementary schools. That's where they do their programs. They're not gonna bus the kids over to the, to Scout Hall and move them back when they're already in the schools. The Scouts are already over there in Scout Hall. They can be with the seniors. This is a, this is a disastrous project because they never told us from the beginning, this is a Town Hall Annex move. I'm voting against it. I'm voting for seniors. I'm gonna vote for, for seniors, and I'm gonna vote for low-income people in this community, and I'm gonna vote for everything that was in that grant. But I'm not voting for this, because I'm not voting for Scout, uh, for Scout Hall to become the new Town Hall Annex.
Oh, everybody else. Mark? Yes, Marie.
Marie De Souza, ten Rice Road, Broadbrook. Um, I just wanna clarify something that was, uh, stated by Keith Angeloff, um, to my letter to the editor. My letter to the editor was me as an individual in town. It has no connotation on that, that it came from the Board of Selectmen at all. Those were my views and what I putting forth for me, that it's a possibility, as I stated in the letter, that because there are cram spaces with the Police Department, because there are cram spaces with the register for board orders and the ambulance association, if this community center gets passed, there's gonna be empty space. So it would give those three people that current, three departments that are currently there an opportunity to, to possibly move forward. Those are my words. Those aren't the selectmen's words. There is some previous police commission that's held, I believe, two meetings. I'll say three, just to cover myself, possibly three meetings where they were looking at their future and what they have plans for the Police Department. They stopped those all on their own for whatever reason. Um, I wasn't privy to any of those meetings, so I don't know what their plans are, just like I don't know what the plans are for the Fire Department. Um, and that's why I said that it'll free up space for the Fire Department to go up there. Right now, the Senior Center not only has senior centers over, the senior staff over there, um, they also have a room up there that takes up quite a bit of space for the full-time firemen that service this town well for a place for them to sleep. Think it would be nice at nighttime if they move, seniors move out of there? And it doesn't make any sense to me to move part of a professional position that we have in our social services department, Melissa Maltese, who has taken over not only senior services, but social services, I put in my letter, and park and rec. She oversees all three of those, and as I put in my letter to the editor, she's doing what used to be done by three different people and has done an excellent job for this community. And why would we continue to inconvenience that director by only moving part of her operation when you can move it all? This way, all three can interact together and work together. That's entrance of the community. Um, I take great insult to the fact that the previous speaker is trying to take my words and change them around to fit his purpose. He has his right not to wanna vote for this for whatever reason. Just like everybody else has the right to vote for their reasons. But to give out erroneous and take in information that's put out there in writing and twist it to meet your own purpose and to serve your own, I believe is a hundred percent wrong. Um, I think this project is probably the best thing that will ever happen to East Windsor, and if we turn that money back to the federal government, shame on us and everybody that votes to do that because we'll probably never, in my opinion, we'll probably never get any grant money again, um, for that type of thing. The Koga property. Jason has applied for grant money to get water, to grant money for the, uh, school hill property with an extension that water lines are gonna go to Park Hill. Great project. It's now people are saying now they can move, and it's gonna be less expensive to build on the Koga property. No consideration is being taken for the lease can be broken up there at any time. That's not a problem, but that land has to be cleared out. It's gotta be leveled off. You've gotta have electric lines up there. You gotta have all kinds of other utilities up there. Um, and then you got a cost of a building. You got a cost of building that's gonna cost you way more than the five million that proposed for this project. I've been in this town for forty-three years now. And I think the first three years I was here, there was that we were gonna build a new Town Hall. We're gonna build a new school. We're gonna do this. We're gonna do that. We even got a damping in this town to improve it. We have an opportunity to save a lawsuit. Not that there's anything wrong with the current, uh, senior, senior center and the ramp and stuff, but it's just our aging population is much older than it's ever been. We're living longer than what we used to. Um, and that's not conducive to what needs to be done. I hear things that there's six people that attend on a daily basis. Well, I go up there every now and then, and I see a lot more than six or seven people up there, um. And it would be nice for those seniors that have difficulty to get from one location to another, to combine all three of those, and who knows? You gotta direct the best in charge of three, three areas. Wouldn't it be nice to? Wouldn't it be nice to merge the park and rec stuff with the elderly and provide elderly exercises along, um? We can't do that there. We'll be able to do it out of the others. I would encourage everyone for the betterment of East Windsor to vote yes for this project. And if you think that there's, uh, something not right in the way the grant was presented, well, I attended the meeting at the senior center when, uh, Dick Blumenthal, Jane Chris Murphy came and heard and was exactly told what was going to happen around the outskirts of the building, what departments were being moved from where, and there was no apprehension on either one of them to say that's not the purpose of the grant. So I don't know where Mr. Aguiloff is getting that. But it is the purpose of the grant. So, and that's all I've got to say, because I think I've used up my time.
Nancy, you already spoke, why?
I'm Nancy Masters, three twelve Rice Street, Broadbrook. I do have a little bit of insight into the Scout Hall. I am the treasurer. I am also the person that books all of the events in the building. It is a fabulous building. It didn't cost any of you a dime. We went out. It took us seven, eight years to raise the money to build this building. And once we did that, we gave the building to the town. It was kind of a lease there. You haven't met your lease, but anyway, when it came to, we have paid for everything. Everything. The town has now paid. We are so excited. Plus, I'm excited I'll be out of the job. That this whole complex will be happening. Seniors in the daytime, I mean, seniors in the daytime, youth groups at nighttime. We have an extra, close to what, sixty, seventy acres attached to it? Maybe?
Oh, no, in a way, yeah.
Our next project, because if we're out of a job, will be to put in walking trails. Possibly disc golf. We already have bocce. We already have horseshoes. We have four pavilions. We have a pond. It is a community area. And why you would not want to go with this whole expansion? Everybody get, we, the youth get to do what they want to do. Everybody gets what they want to do. And to say that this is not viable is, is just wrong. This is the best thing this town has ever come up with.
Want to give everybody a chance to speak for the first time, and anybody wants to rebut or speak later, we'll call on you to, okay? This gentleman here, go ahead.
Randy Tufin, Seven Henry Trail. Um, I went cribbing, but this was done, and, um, when I first went over there, I was kind of amazed to see the condition of the entrance for the senior center. Um, during one of my trips there, and I only go there once a week, but during one of my trips there, there was a little old lady and a little old man that were trying to get up the steps. They couldn't get up the steps. I asked them, can I help you? And they said, no, we're here. We need to be able to get up these steps by ourselves in order to use the facility. So they couldn't do it, so they turned around and left. So to move the, the senior center out to, uh, Scout Hall, where everything's on one level, you can just walk into anything. There won't be any problem with anybody getting into the senior center. And that's one of the biggest reasons that, that people don't come to the senior center, is because they don't have a way to get into it. It's too hard for them to get into it. Another thing at the senior center, the, the, uh, they offer the seniors a chance to get their taxes done. Well, right now, there's nowhere for the seniors to go to get their taxes done. They have to go into where the office is, take everybody out of the office, so you can talk to one or two people about their taxes, and then the office staff can come back in and do their job. Now, does that make sense? I don't think that makes sense. If you have something like this, you'll have an area where you can go in and talk to more than one person at a time. You'll have different rooms that you can go in and talk, talk to these people. There's more chance for more programs to be done out there. One of the biggest things that, that I'm looking forward to is putting children in with, with senior citizens. There've been so many studies that have been done that have shown that when senior citizens interact with younger children, the seniors gain from that experience and the children gain from that experience. They both get a, a, a positive reaction working with each other. It's a chance for a, a lot of activity to take place that's not taking place right now. There's also an opportunity, there, there is, uh, for veterans to come and talk to other veterans about what's happening in their life. There's nowhere to do that at senior center now. There's no room where they can go in and talk as a group of guys without interrupting lunch. So there's so many opportunities to have this. And to say that you're, 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 you're voting for the seniors but not voting for this is, is a, is a misnomer. If you're saying that, you know, I'm not going to vote for this, you're saying seniors, you're stuck over there, and that's, that's where you're going to have to stay. Sorry. And I think that's wrong.
I'm Nicole Souza, thirty-eight Perry Lane. Um, you know, I, so it sounds like we're all kind of the senior center. I don't, I haven't heard anybody speak against that piece of it. I will just say, when it comes to our park and rec department, for example, we have a buddy breakfast. That's going to be held at the senior service center, right? I, I've been there. Parking is not the best, so families don't go, right? Like, we have a good, a pretty good turnout, in my opinion, but I think more people would go if there was a better place to park, um, and a better venue, just in general. Um, I also agree that Scout Hall is a beautiful property. Um, park and rec ha- holds things at the reservoir, which is wonderful, but if it's raining, where, where do we go? Uh, we used to do bingo, and that was done at the, um, annex. But again, not the best venue. I mean, my kids, you know, we went, but we didn't have a great turnout. It's, we have places, think all over, anywhere that we can just find space is where park and rec goes. If we have one place that people know this is where park and rec stuff is, we're going to have a better turnout, and it's going to be better for our kids in general. I know I'm always looking for something for my daughter to do other than be on her tablet, right? So, uh, you know, we definitely need that space. There just isn't anything, um, for our kids other than, you know, our reservoir, which they can't use during the winter months, and so. Um, I support the community center.
See a hand way in the back there. There you go.
And I hear the positives about bringing in the seniors and bringing in the, um, the kids to hang out together. And then I hear the moving of the services at Town Hall Annex as a bad thing. Now, right now, the police department, we can't hire another female officer because we don't have the space. The nursing mothers, the nursing officers, they have to go to the bathroom to do it with someone standing outside, so they don't get walked in on. They've gone to the break room. There's no room for that. They're not in code everywhere, everything that we're supposed to be. Can you imagine? Our female officers are amazing. We can't hire anymore. It just can't happen. The locker room, I can't do this. And I'm pretty sure. Can you imagine an officer that comes in, has their heavy equipment, and wants to change for their next shift? They need to change to go home. Space that they have in the wall, where they sit down, is about this big. We can't have two officers in there and talking. Or two female officers. When I was on the committee to look at what we have to do to solve these problems, and Maria's right, she was there, and we stopped those meetings because we were really excited about this project, and we're like, we can't, when we were looking at it, we're like, how much is it going to cost for us to build a new police department that meets the needs that it currently does not? And gets us at least to a minimum where a police department should be. It's going to cost about roughly a minimum eighteen million dollars. We can't do that. We can't ask the town for eighteen million dollars. So if we can take it all out, move these few offices to this community center, if we use up that space, we can do a lot more with that.
Okay, I'd like to give everybody that hasn't spoken yet a chance to. Oh, I'm sorry, and the people online, keep forgetting about them. If you want to express, uh, your opinion on this, turn off your microphones and do so. Can you hear me?
I'm good.
Okay, good. Anybody else? All right, anybody else? Yes, of course.
With your permission, can I put a display up?
Yes, you may.
I want to, um, I want to put some thoughts together to address some of the concerns that have been raised about this project over the last several meetings. First, there's been concern about the project being rushed. As you can see from the timeline on the screen here, this project has been anything but rushed. The Plan of Conservation Development on page seventy-six says the town shall seek property to establish a community center and a multi-use indoor facility. That was adopted on, in October of twenty sixteen. Page seventy of the P O C D discusses an integrated facilities program for the town and lists in pertinent parts following things. The town shall identify and detail senior center design requirements and site criteria. We have done that. It evaluate, we're to evaluate the reorganization, the relocation of offices, renovations of underutilized spaces, and continued sharing of meeting spaces in the town hall and the annex. We have done that. We've identified the availability of large properties with development potential for municipal facilities. We have done that. We've conducted necessary cost-effectiveness analyses on the available options. We have done that. We've initiated at the acquisition of property identified as appropriate to meet the current and future facility site goals. We've implemented the cost-effectiveness improvements and the expansions of existing facilities. We've evaluated the property acquisition to provide for new facility capacity. We have done all of those things as specified in the twenty sixteen P O C D. Chapter four of the P O C D says that we must recognize and anticipate the needs for facilities and infrastructural assets both near and long term. Near-term needs must be addressed to provide the services and amenities that residents desire and expect. This is all verbatim from P O C D. Longer-term planning is necessary, particularly for larger capital investments to initiate the fiscal and design processes that are necessary to accomplish the community's goals. Examples specifically listed in the Plan of Conservation and Development for infrastructure, infrastructure improvements specifically include a senior center and parks and recreation assets. The P O C D also states that the town needs to evaluate these in the context of the potential for increased development and population growth, especially among the elderly. In twenty nineteen, the former Board of Selectmen sought to buy Grace Episcopal Church and to convert that into a senior center, but that bid was unfortunately rejected by the seller. Throughout twenty twenty-one, the town investigated a myriad of options to address the issues of needed space for seniors as well as the community center goal that's outlined in the P O C D. Alternatives considered to accomplish that include, but are not limited to, the acquisition of the Middleton Center, the now destroyed building on, on Feld Road, the acquisition of the Solder North Facility, the Cogo Property, the acquisition of Eye Cares at Touchpoint, expansion of the Town Hall Annex, and other things. The Middleton Center and the Solder North Projects are also specifically called out on page sixty-six of the P O C D. We examined all of those things for viability. In one case, with the Sol, with the Solder North Facility, the state is not interested in conveying it repeatedly. And the Department of Defense obviously had other plans for the property, which is the demolition of the building, but we did work through our congressional delegation to see if that was viable. In June of twenty twenty-one, the Board of Finance transferred one hundred thousand dollars from the town's operating budget surplus to have on hand for the development of a shovel-ready plan set. This also aligns with the P O C D, which has a primary strategy in chapter three, also on page sixty-six, says that the town should continue to request money to be set aside in the annual budget for matching funds for grants. Without the planning money that was transferred by the Board Fin, Board of Finance, there is no way that the town would have been in a position to qualify for the two point seven five million dollar federal appropriation. It wasn't until February of twenty twenty-two, when the Scout Hall Building Committee first approached the town with this idea. They approached the town with this idea, which was by far the most cost-effective opportunity for us to solve the problems outlined in the P O C D in twenty sixteen. Since then, the project has been discussed publicly, or the process at least has been reported on publicly, no less than sixteen times over a one-year period. It first, if we first identified this as an issue the community needs aggressively in twenty sixteen, it was attempted to be solved in twenty nineteen, and it's been actively pursued since twenty twenty-one. That is in no way rushed. The second point that I want to talk about is the commitment of funds. Some people have raised concerns about how those funds for planning purposes for this project have become available. On June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Board of Finance, the only body legally allowed to transfer funds between departments, transferred funding to be used for plan development of a shovel-ready project. Later, on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, the Board of Finance, again, the only body that can legally move money between departments, transferred one point two million dollars from the town's F Y twenty-one, twenty-two budget to a capital non-recurring line to offset these project costs. They were well within their authority to do so, and no additional expenses were incurred by taxpayers. Here again, the P O C D says on page sixty-six that the town should continue to request money to be set aside for matching funds for grants. That is exactly what was done. I've heard questions about why a revoke, why now? We just had this question posted voters on November eighth. The question that was asked to voters in November was, should the town fund three point eight million dollars for the project and utilize one point two million set aside in capital non-recurring for that purpose? That question failed by twenty-three votes. In December, a month and a half after the vote was held, we were notified that the funding for the project was included in the federal omnibus bill. By any measure, that is a tremendous accomplishment for the town of East Windsor. That two point seven five million dollars is tied to the renovation and expansion of Scout Hall for its conversion into a multi-generational service center or a community center. That funding is not block granted. It cannot be used for any other purpose other than that project. With that fact understood, the board of selectmen were left with two choices. Decline the congressional funding or ask the voters in town if the addition of the federal funding had changed their minds about the project. That is what is going to happen on April fourth, when voters will be asked whether to accept the federal funding and move forward with the project. As a citizen in this town, I strongly encourage the voters of East Windsor to vote yes for our kids, for our seniors, and for those who depend on social services. I strongly encourage the voters to vote yes, because our town has identified this as a critical need since the year two thousand and has been working to identify a solution since twenty sixteen. I encourage the voters to vote yes, because it's a good project and it is the right thing for our community.
Hi, Diane. I just wanted to say, I'm, in another county fifteen years, I've been in the under almost fifteen years now. And this town, the Board of Selectmen, especially our ones, has been amazing about spending money wisely, about giving us the most service for our ballot. And if you listen to everybody who has any staggerness saying, we have more expensive options, but we can do this, this, and this with what we're, what we've got with this project. It makes the most sense. This project will give us the most bang for our buck, which is what this town is really good at doing. But I think that we should look into it.
Anybody else hasn't spoken yet?
Phil, phone, Frank, and Stanic Road. Uh, first of all, it's a senior, I'm all for this project. It's something we've needed for a long time. Uh, it's, I remember the board of selectmen, years ago, insane problems were discussed here. Same problems were discussed that we have today, and they have not been corrected. So this is virtually an inexpensive move. Uh, do a lot of good. As a member of Nerford over ten years, uh, the annex in its present configuration is not the answer to a police station. We are not in a police station, we are in a very old elementary school. And every time we try to do something, it requires moving walls and roofing or adding air conditioning on one thing or another, so. Uh, to consider the annex as a new police station, it's not, it'll just be a, instead of the annex, is that what I said? As a police station, it will just be another abandoned, and someday we're going to have to fight for it. Thank you.
Anybody else wants to speak? First, hi. There's one hand up, I think it's Keith.
I just wanted to correct something, I'm not going to change any minds, and actually, I didn't come here tonight to change any minds, I came to express my opinion. First of all, uh, First Selectman said this is a vote to accept the, the federal funding. That's not true. This vote has nothing to do with accepting the federal funding. This is a vote for a specific project, we have until well into twenty twenty-four to make use of the federal funding. There's nothing in this referendum question that says whatsoever, does the town accept the federal funding? That's not true. I would, I would like to see the project be a different project. Secondly, a member of the public asked the First Selectman for all the planning, he said that choices were made and benefit, cost benefit analysis was done for other sites. In fact, he told that to the Board of Finance, that he was going to do that in, in June, I'm sorry, in April of twenty twenty-two. And a member of the public asked for that. And nobody's seen it. We've never seen any of the analysis that says that the, that the First Selectman talked about tonight, that says that this particular project is the right project. The third thing is, is that I, we can't get the grant application, and I'm going to challenge the First Selectman, we posted on the town website tomorrow, so that what is our grants is, is our, is our property, we have a right to know what the grant was submitted for. And that's the purpose of the grant, it's, the federal government in fact said that they, that, that, that municipal governments are required to be transparent in these, in these grant applications. Want to collect, correct, one final thing. Youth programs in the senior center, community center is exactly what we want. We want youth with seniors, we want young people with seniors, we want to have playdates, and we want to have school activities, and we want to have the senior intermissing, and we want to have all of that. Okay? That's not Parks and Recreation Department. Those are kids' activities. Park and Recreation are the offices for the staff, spaces to store equipment for Parks and Recreation programs, all the equipment that they need, that they're currently storing in the annex, that will be scored, sorted, stored in your building. These are offices, these are not play grade, playrooms, playthings. What you talked about to use for the Scout Hall is exactly what we want, we want youth there, mixed in with the community and with seniors. This is going to be a half a building filled with offices and with storage for Parks and Recreation staff. They are five minutes down the road from Town Hall Annex, if you Google it, it's five minutes from Annex to the Scout Hall. They can run their projects. More space for activities, more space for programming, less space for offices, less space for storage, let's do this project right. That's my opinion.
Anybody that wants to talk, I'm going to call on this gentleman here who spoke long ago.
Yeah, Don Flot again, Trent Martin, Berkeley. Uh, attorney, I just take, uh, acceptance of everything you said, I'm sorry. I know it's your opinion, I know you're an attorney, that's your job. But as a resident, it's not supposed to be personal, Mr. Moderator, you know, he, he just said, he brought some, his personal opinions. Not as a resident, but a person. Again, I've been to the, I've been several times down to the Scout Hall, not only as a resident, but prior to that as a commissioner for Scout. So I know the process, I know the building, I know the kids that use it and who can't use it. So, having said that, when I went, when we invited our representatives, our two senators to the, uh, President Scout Hall, I mean, uh, Senior Center, Senator, uh, Blue, uh, Blue, Lee Over, to me and says, this is your senior center? This is what he said to me. That's telling when your senator sees the inadequacy of your present senior center, when he leans to you and says, this is your senior center? Yeah. So, we've got to stop kicking the hand down the road. Somebody spoke months ago, this has been going on for twenty-two years. Is that the president when they built the Puget Firehouse? Yeah. We got to stop, get the vote for you, move forward, and everybody will have a wonderful facility, thank you.
Just a note here, I'm going to limit this to one rebuttal to your original. We're not going to extend the same topic over and over again, okay? This young lady, your second shot at it here.
No, again, um, one speaker talked about all of the things that are going to be taken out of the Town Hall Annex and moved into the senior citizens and to the senior community center and it's going to be made this. Yes. Move it off, get it out of my police department. Can you imagine, a low cost at the end of the day of this project? Compare that to a female officer applying for a job and telling her, sorry, wrong sex. What kind of lawsuit would that bring to the town? Big difference. We need those services out of the annex, we need that room more than you can believe. If we get all that space that we need, it's still going to be a horrible police department, eventually, like Ed said, we're going to need a new one. But in the meantime, can we put a band-aid on it and live there for a few more years? Out of order.
Sooner or later.
Sooner or later, we have, yeah.
Make sure that we're talking about the question.
That's it, okay, thank you. Okay. Paul, your second shot.
Thank you. Paul Anderson, so a lot of talk here about seniors and youths. But this is not about seniors and youth, this is about everybody. This is a building that is intended to be used by everybody in this town. Park and Rec will be challenged with managing it. How do they manage a building without even being there? This is ongoing, all day, all evening, things that happen every day of the week. I don't see how any of that can happen with an absentee management. So, we need something for everybody, which is why it's called Community Center. It's for the entire community, not for youth, seniors. There's no special groups, it's everybody. I'm not a senior yet. I'm only seventy-nine. My punishment continues, thank you.
We have a speaker online, who wishes to speak, Maureen DuKlo?
Yes, yes, I'm on one forty-nine Depot Street, Maureen DuKlo. Um, I'm absolutely for, um, accepting the federal grant and moving forward. Um, like the last speaker said, it benefits all, um, the safety for seniors and everyone on a one-level building and all the things, uh, wonderful things that has been done, have been done at Scout Hall already. Um, it just benefits all, I agree, and, um, multi-generational for, um, everyone in the town benefits just everyone. Parks and Rec make apples, absolute sense to be there. Thanks for letting me speak.
You're welcome, thank you. Do we have a rebuttal or do we adjourn? We have a motion to adjourn? Nancy asked.
Sorry, I can't see you guys.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, and all those in favor? Pose.